Okay, it's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand please and join me in a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This is our first meeting of the year and under our regulations we need to elect a chairperson and a vice-chairperson for the year. Do I have a nomination for chairperson?
Nominate Mr. Jim Green.
Do I have a nomination? Is there a second?
Second, sir.
Okay, nomination and a second. Any discussion of further nominations? Then we'll close the nominations and vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Do I have a nomination for vice-chairperson? And if no one makes a nomination, I'll nominate our last year's chairperson, Commissioner William Gussler. You didn't know you were vice-chair last year, did you? And is there a second?
My second.
Yeah, second by Commissioner Washington. Any further discussion of nominations? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. We don't have minutes in the packet, so we'll postpone the approval of the minutes until the next meeting. There will be a public hearing on every item on the agenda, but at this time, if anyone has any comments on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, you can come up to the podium and make them now. And seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda. Our first item is a request to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area and to recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional District to RCE Residential Country Estate for the property owned by Alberto Esteban and located at 1228 Usler Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Planner One with the City's Planning Division. Tonight, we have a request to rezone a five-acre parcel of land from T Transitional to RCE, a residential country estate. The subject property is located at 1228 Usler Road. The applicant is requesting the rezoning of the property to residential country estate in order to divide the property into two lots. The transitional zoning district requires a minimum lot size of two and a half acres and the residential country estate requires a minimum lot size of one acre. DRC recommends approval, staff recommends approval, and myself and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. Does the petitioner have a presentation? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the comprehensive plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas and recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional to RCE Residential Country Estate for the property owned by Alberto Esteban and located at 1228 Usler Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No.
Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. And that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a quasi-judicial item, and it's a request to approve a variance of the Apopka Code of Ordinances, Part III, Land Development Code, Article 5, Section 5, Point 10, Point 8, Point (Uppercase B), Point (Uppercase A), wall and projecting signs for a single and multiple occupancy development to allow a 22-foot-by-12-foot, 264 square feet, outdoor video board for drive-in worship for the property owned by Southeastern Conference Association of the Seventh Day Adventist, Inc., and located at 110 Athletics Row. And since this is a special, quasi-judicial, I would ask if anyone desires to be recognized as an affected party.
Well, you're the president.
Then as the applicant, you're included in any event, so you don't need that. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask commissioners if anyone has had ex parte communications on this item.
No.
Okay, and seeing none, we'll proceed with the staff presentation.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Planner One with the City's Planning Division. Tonight, we have a request for a variance from Land Development Code, Article 5, Section 5, 10, 8B, 1A, primary secondary wall sign sizing, which states one primary wall sign is permitted on each wall of a building, parallel or perpendicular to a road or street, not exceeding or an area equal to 15% of the front wall face height multiplied by the building width, not exceeding 200 square feet. The applicant is requesting the variance to allow a 264-square-foot outdoor video board to be installed on the east side of the existing structure to be utilized in conjunction with the outdoor worship conducted in the parking lot. The applicant installed the video board without a building permit and applied for an after-the-fact building permit that was subsequently rejected due to the proposed video board exceeding the maximum allowable 200 square feet in area. Staff does not object to a video board that is 200 square feet in area or the need and purpose of the video board. The request was reviewed by the Development Review Committee, which consists of police and fire departments. The Development Review Committee stated concerns regarding noise transmission from the video board after suitable operating hours. The video board must only be used during certain operating hours, which have been designated as dawn to dusk. If other uses outside of these operating hours are to arise in the future, they must be presented and taken through a special permit process. Per the Land Development Code, Planning Commission shall make an initial determination on the three criteria noted on the screen. Once the initial determination has been reached, a variance shall only be approved on a finding that the applicant demonstrates there is competent substantial evidence on the nine variance criteria. Planning Commission's decision shall be one of the following: approval of the variance, approval of the variance subject to modification, or denial of the variance. Myself and the applicant are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
Yes, I have a question. Does the staff recommend the variance?
We...I'm going to defer to my planning manager.
For the record, Bobby Hall, planning manager, we put in the report that we don't object to it being 200 square feet. As far as conditions, the police and fire department came up with several conditions that are contained within your staff report. It is up to you to determine whether or not you either recommend approval or approve with conditions or deny the variance request.
I have a couple of questions as well. Under the ordinance, there are certain findings we need to make to approve it. And I'm not sure I see how we can make those findings. It's one, if the requested variance relates to a hardship due to the characteristics of the land and not solely on the needs of the owner. Is staff able to make that finding? Or is that just something we have to decide? And while I'm at it, one of the other conditions, it says there are practical difficulties in carrying out the strict letter of the regulation in that the requested variance relates to a hardship due to the characteristics of the land and not solely on the needs of the owner. Now, if we're to approve it, as I understand it, we need to make that finding. I'm not sure I can make that finding. Now, you know, I'm only one vote here, of course.
Mr. Chair, that's for the applicant to make their presentation, and if you, as a board, believe that they have met the standards in the code on competent substantial evidence, then it's your determination, your discretion, to determine whether or not that standard has been met.
I realize that, and of course, we haven't had the presentation from the petitioner yet, but I just, I wanted to at least raise the question to staff.
I have a question. The video board, it says, is on the east side of the existing structure. When I drove by there, that structure at 110 Athletics Row is the Well Athletic Center. Is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, and on Athletics Row, that's where you have the front doors going into the facility and out, right? So now, the video board is going to be on that same wall. That's the east wall. Is that right?
That is the...
East wall, yeah.
East wall, yes, sir.
So it's facing the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just going to assume, you get in trouble when you assume, that this video board is going to be to the left or the right of the entrance doors?
Yeah, it's right underneath the main entrance door, I believe. And the applicant has some photos they'd like to submit for evidence. There are photos in the staff report as well that show where the location of the board is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's in the staff report, your staff report. If you page through, it does...I don't, I'm sorry I didn't get it on the PowerPoint, but it does, there's a projection that comes out on the east side, and that's where they put the video boards. But it does face the parking lot on the east side.
Oh, I never saw that.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I see. Okay, I missed that one.
Yeah, further questions of staff?
Well, just an observation. When I read it, I went, it's going to be on the east side of the building. There's not a lot of room for anything to block the sunrise on the horizon. And so as the hours change, a dawn-to-dusk requirement changes every day. And that just needs to be assured that the applicant understands
Sure.
that it may not be four o'clock in the afternoon. In the summertime, might be fine.
Yeah.
But in the wintertime, not so much.
Right. And like we put in the report and like Allison indicated in her presentation, if it was 200 square feet, we would sign off on the building permit. We have no issues with it.
Okay.
Because that meets the code.
Okay, further questions of staff?
Yes, and the point of the 200 square feet versus the 265 square foot, is that based on setting a precedence or...if we, in other words, we make a variance to the code now, does that set groundwork for other people to want larger signs somewhere else? Because that could be the same thing as an advertising sign on the side of a building, correct?
Legally, there's, variances do not create a precedent. Variances are examined on a case-by-case basis as to whether that applicant has met the standards. There's no precedent or legal term stare decisis when it comes to a variance. Each applicant will have to make that presentation and that determination, and the board has to look at each application in its own, on its own individual merit and not based on establishing precedents based on other variances. That would then be the legislative discretion of the council to change the code in that case.
And also, if I'm reading it correctly, it says if the Planning Commission finds it's unique here, that's one thing, but if they, if they find that it's not unique and it could be common to other areas, then we have to consider that as well, do we not?
Those are among your standards to consider.
Okay.
Real quick, just in the staff report, item number seven was special conditions and circumstances. About halfway through the staff response, and this is part of the request for the, if this does get approved, there's some conditions that staff is recommending. Says the Development Review Committee stated that the uses need to be, to remain oriented towards worship. Viewing or showing of motion pictures, picture films is prohibited. Renting of the video board will be prohibited. External speakers or system is prohibited. In other words, they, right now, they broadcast on a radio basis, so it goes right to the car, which is a good idea. And then nighttime uses are also prohibited unless approved by the City's DRC, Development Review Committee. And then if other uses arise in the future, they must be presented or taken through a special event permit process. And that's a one-time use. It's not a continual type use.
Let me ask the question. If they decided to go with 200 square feet, would they have all these restrictions or these other restrictions will go away?
These could pretty much go away. That's, you know, some of the, you know, ideas behind it. Typically, a sign isn't supposed to be a moving sign. We do, and that's the other reason why this is more of a variance-type condition. If it's a moving sign, similar to your video boards, they're limited to, I believe, it's 25% of the sign space. So if they wanted to keep a video board up there as, you know, that type of use, it ended up, it would end up probably becoming a special exception. Because again, it's, you're limited 25% of a sign space. We thought this was the, you know, the easiest route to go for this because it is a size constraint that was put up before they even applied for anything, so.
All right, further questions of staff? Okay, thank you. And we have a petitioner's presentation.
Set him up here. Do you need a pointer? There's that, and then it's just arrows to go to the next one. Thank you, sure. Do you all mind if I take my mask off?
Do not mind.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Jonathan Hules. I'm with the Lowndes Law Firm at 215 North Yola Drive in Orlando, 32801. Here on behalf of the owner, which is Seventh Day Adventist, and this is known as the Well or Patmos Chapel. Some of you may recall, it's also called the Cooper Sports Complex. This photograph just kind of shows the lay of the land of where this property is located. I'm not sure how familiar all of you may be with it. It's to the west of Chapman Road, south of First Street. And let me zoom in a little bit more. We could talk about where, because I think you all had already discussed this. But the video board would be, is currently, let's see.
Right at the top.
It's erected here, which is over at the end of the Portica Share. This is the main building here, and here's the parking lot. Why it was put up there is because at the start of, or into the COVID pandemic, the church decided to no longer conduct inside worship. And they put their brains together and said, well, what else can we do? And they realized, well, we do have the layout that would lend itself to doing some drive-in worship. And so they went through and applied to the city for a special event permitting to allow for Saturday drive-in worship, which they're currently conducting. And they, so it's, they have a small stage set up here in front of the Portica Share, I'll call it a Portica Share. And they then have the congregation drive in, stay in their cars. There's a low-frequency FM radio station that they tune into, and they can listen, and they can worship safely. And the thought process behind the video board was we can add an element here because, you know, if you're in the back rows, if it's a busy day, it's difficult to see anyone that may be on this small erected stage that's in the front. And we could be able to broadcast a video feed of that pastor or singers or whoever may be taking stage during that worship service. And so they contacted a video board manufacturer. They went under contract. They paid a considerable sum of money for this video board. They had it erected, and it turns out, the contractor didn't follow the rules, didn't go and get a permit, didn't go to check out what could be put on the, on the wall or how the city would regulate it. Now, we're kind of stuck in the situation where the video board's up, it's not being operated, but it is the desire of the church to utilize it for these outdoor Saturday worship services. So let me kind of show you some photos, because you did that. So this is the front of that Portica Share, and here it shows the video board. It is 22 by 11. That, that ratio is kind of picked because that's kind of a widescreen typical ratio for a video feed. And you can't see it here, but this gives the information, and I'm sure it's widely distributed, of the low-frequency FM channel that they can tune into and get the audio. I keep interchange between the two. Okay, so this picture on the left is looking out from just immediately above the video board out to the parking lot. You can't, it's hard to see in this, and I apologize. This is a police officer's patrol car, just for perspective. If you then turn to the photo on the right, this is past the parking lot, so it'd be like kind of out here looking towards the video board. Video board's right here. Here's that police car. Another, I'm sorry, another perspective. This is from the south looking kind of northwest. Here would be the video board just off the property line. And then this picture is from what would be the northeast corner, looking back towards the property. Now, in terms of view shed, I'm just going to go back to this photo here. The view shed really is just this parking lot. During DRC, there were no concerns expressed from staff about, you know, external issues with, with who may see this video board and what it would be used for, because here we have a railroad right-of-way, you then have the commercial strip in 441 right behind it. This is a vacant property, and maybe even this first photo shows it better. And then you have the remaining warehouse users within the Cooper Warehouse Complex. So really, there wasn't a whole lot of concerns expressed about some type of an external impact of the use of the video board on the neighboring properties or, you know, potentially causing a nuisance. There was discussion regarding amplified noise, but we are certainly willing to put a condition on of approval if it was this board's, you know, would like it to, to put no amplified noise ever to be utilized with the board.
Excuse me?
Yes.
So you're currently, when the services are being done, it's all via the radio? There is no microphone speak or anything in the broadcast?
Correct.
Okay.
No amplified noise. It's all through the radio.
That wouldn't change, I understand.
Right, that wouldn't change. Like I said before, you know, the surrounding area is industrial warehousing, it's vacant land, and it's a, and a railroad right-of-way. It's, the, the, the whole idea behind it, why it was put up, you know, was to be utilized in conjunction with outdoor drive-in worship. Right now, those are on Saturdays. They have special event permitting, Saturdays 10 to 1. There is a desire to have it on Wednesday as well, but that has not been approved by the city yet, so that is maybe putting the cart a bit before the horse, because that would have to go through a similar process as the Saturday worship has, which they would need to go before DRC and apply for that special event permit. The size and dimensions of the current board provides the proper aspect ratio for a widescreen video board, and it's, our belief that it's appropriate for that view shed of that parking lot. We don't believe it's any bigger than it needs to be or any smaller it needs to be. There would be no amplified sound, as we said. And, you know, the proposed conditions, I, I know Jim and his staff has put some in there, and there's a couple of them. I, I would like to simplify it if, if this were to be approved and just say it's going to be for this worship Saturday, because that's the only thing that's approved to be used for now. And any other use would require review and approval of the city of a special event permit. So, you know, we believe, and it's included in your staff report, that we meet the conditions of a variance. It's an unfortunate circumstance that the church has found itself in. There was absolutely no, you know, desire to find it here. They hired a contractor, they paid them money, and it was a considerable sum, and they're just trying to work through the issue as we speak. So I'm happy to discuss any of the specific conditions with you and how we...
I have a question with regard to the contractor. You say the contractor failed to get a building permit. Was he clearly obligated to get a building permit?
I haven't looked at that.
I don't know if the Board of Trustees at the church, I don't know if the Board of Trustees or what. But somebody should have been reviewing that and asked for, what was the permit before the work even started? So now, you just said, you used your own words. You said, well, this is the easier path to resolve the issue, which is to get a variance, instead of challenging the company that installed the video board in the first place incorrectly. Does that sound about right?
Well, I mean, essentially, yes. I mean, but that's, you know, if, if, the last thing the church wants to do is engage in an adversarial proceeding litigation. And, you know, we wanted to present this to you. We thought it was a unique circumstance. We feel it does meet the criteria for a variance. And, you know, obviously, it's the decision of this commission on ultimately what comes next.
I have a question probably for our attorney. If we, were we to deny it, you can, of course, appeal it to the city council. For us to approve it, there are certain findings we should make. Were we to deny it and were it to be appealed to city council, are they under the same constraints we are, or could they just reverse the commission?
If the city council finds that the applicant's justifications are based, that the applicant presented competent substantial evidence to justify the variance, then the city council can overrule.
Okay.
Or the decision then is that this board reviewed the evidence that was presented before it and that the evidence was competent substantial evidence, and therefore they would overrule the board's decision. However, anything that goes before the city council is going to be based on the record that's presented
Right.
before this commission today.
Right, right. Okay, further questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do. So you're the attorney for the church, correct?
I'm, been retained, I do not do day-to-day work.
Well, I mean, in this, in this matter, I mean...
Yeah, I've been...
You don't know if the contractor's at fault or not?
I don't. I've been asked to look at that in detail yet.
Well, I think, and this is a self hardship, and self hardships don't work with variances, so I don't know how we can, how we can approve it or recommend it. Me personally, I don't know how I could do it.
Well, I, I think it's the frame of mind, right? I could argue, and, and I would argue that the hardship is this COVID pandemic. The hardship is this church doesn't want to be doing a drive-in worship service, but it's the safest and, and, you know, way that they can come together and worship together. And it is, they wouldn't be before you today if that wasn't the case. And they didn't create the pandemic. They created, you know, the pandemic creates the need for these type of, and quite frankly, I think it's, it's a unique circumstance. This can't work everywhere. It's the, it's the fact that this church happened to buy a sports complex that has four, a parking lot with 400 spaces and can, you know, accommodate this type of use.
Well, the statute doesn't just say hardship. It says hardship due to the characteristics of the land. Can you justify that?
Well, I would tell you that, you know, the characteristics of the land is that it's a large parking lot and that a limit of 200 feet, and based on the aspect ratio and how they'd have to build it, wouldn't provide a video board with a sufficient view shed to be able to service that parking lot. And so, you know, I think this is just an extremely unique situation. And the one other thing I think should be mentioned that, like I said, no other use is, certainly not going to be used for advertising, so while we're bringing this under and trying to characterize it as signage, it truly isn't. It's, it's something that I think staff had struggled with trying to characterize what this would be utilized for. And so in interfacing with staff, it was decided to go around this. I mean, I think the argument we made, it's not really, should be regulated as a sign anyways, because it, it's not utilized to advertise any use that's either, or goods, it's not retail, but goods sold within the specific property.
I have a couple of thoughts. As far as who dropped the ball or the fault of that, would it have been if they put a 200, and I guess this is directed to you, Jim, if they would have put a 200 square-foot sign up, we wouldn't be having a discussion. They would have paid a fine for being, not having their permit issued a permit, and this would have been a non-issue, correct?
Well, we probably would have brought this to you in regards to a variance also because it's over the 25% motion. You know, like the, like gas stations or the bank signs where you have the bank sign itself, and then it says time, date, you know, get your CDs here. Those are limited to 25%. So this is, in this case, it's 100%, and it's all movable. So we, if, if, the strict interpretation would be if, if this was applied for, we would not approve it because it doesn't meet the code at all.
Okay, if it was 20... I'm sorry. One more. Okay. And forgive me, but clarify for me the need, or the, let's say, the motivation for the signage regulation that we have now. I mean, my assumption is that we don't want to look like Times Square when you drive down the street, and there's giant moving signs on both sides.
That's pretty much it. We're trying to avoid the billboard look on walls.
Okay.
There's, we do have a lot of large signs, and we do take into consideration that the height of a building, like Advent Health, you know, they, we actually did change the code to allow for high-rise structures to have a larger sign than 200 square feet. It'd be like, you know, putting a poster stamp on the side, which is basically what they had done at that, at that stage.
But, and my thoughts are, that doesn't necessarily really fit into that same category. This doesn't fit in that same category if, as this gentleman has said, it's only turned on to do this on this day and then shut off. It's not a consistent, active message on the sign. So does that, and I realize that we're limited, because that's the rule that we have in place, but does that really fit into the intent of that rule that we put in place to limit the signs on the side of the building, limit the movement and all that? If it's inactive 95% of the time, or whatever that percentage would be, is that, does that really fit into that? While it falls under the sign ordinance, does it fit under the intent of the sign ordinance, I guess is my point.
If it conveys a message, which obviously, this, it's a worship, it conveys a message. That's the function of a sign. So since we, as I mentioned before, if we don't have a category, you know, we haven't pigeonholed this particular category into our sign code, it would normally not be allowed.
Okay. So it, I guess, let me put it this way.
So we, this is the closest thing we could come.
Okay. What if we decide to have an ordinance for limited viewing signs? What would that ordinance be? And would it be under the same constraints as the signs we have now? In other words...
No clue.
If they can, if they said that we'll run it for, it's going to run for three, four hours a week, it'll be on on the weekend, and the rest of the time, it's just a blank board up there? I don't see the contention of the blank board being up there.
Well, again, that's speculative. We don't have it, we can't, I can't put that together for you.
No, no, I'm not saying, but I'm saying, would staff look at it in the same way?
I don't know. Again, I don't, I don't have any parameters that I can review.
I'm not trying to be argumentative with you. I'm just, I'm trying to think this through, that if the point of the ordinance is, we don't want big billboards on the side of the thing flashing stuff, and I get that, but does this fit into that category if the concession is made that it's simply used for the broadcast on a Sunday morning, and the rest of the time, it's just a black square on the side of the building?
I can't, I can't answer that, because I can't, I can't fit that into our code the way you're outlining it.
Okay, and that's my point.
And we, I struggle with that as well. I mean, I just, candidly, I mean, I, discussing with Jim, it was agreed upon that this was the best, we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, kind of.
All right, no.
Because it's not advertising. It, I mean, the definition of what a sign is, this isn't, yet this is probably the closest thing to it. So I, you know, I mean, I struggled with that as well, and that's why we are absolutely prepared to put conditions on its use and operation in order to, you know, make this not set, you know, to be very specific to this property, and couldn't be used as an example by anyone else.
And who's going to enforce all these rules and regulations? Who's going to be watching it all the time? Is self-enforcement, is that how it works?
Well, I think it would be like any other development approval that this, this commission or the city council makes, it would fall to code enforcement, and it would start like any other code enforcement. If someone, you know, became aware that it was not being operating in accordance with this, with a approval, if it was to be approved, then it would start with a code enforcement complaint, and then there'd be an investigation. If there was a violation, it'd be a violation, and it would be remedied that way. I mean, I don't, I don't know of another way that it could be enforced.
I just, if code enforcement is busy enough, and they don't need any more special restrictions to enforce and keep track of.
Well, I, you know, I don't think there's, the intent is what's stated here. There's no intent beyond that. There would, and like I said, like, the church has a good relationship with the city. The church, it went through the proper channels when it, for doing the drive-in worship. I mean, here, it's an unfortunate circumstance. They paid a lot of money to somebody that did the wrong thing, and they're trying to rectify that. This is by far the easiest than getting into any sort of litigation. We think, you know, based on our application materials and the staff report, that there is evidence in the record that we meet all the criteria, and we do feel that, you know, by placing these very specific, very strong conditions of approval, it could address all of these issues we're talking about here this evening.
Jim, if the applicant, from the very beginning, approached the staff regarding the interest of installing a video board for a purpose, well-stated, no doubt about it, we understand, I believe it 100%. And then they said to you, "Listen, this parking lot is deep, and that if we had a parishioner or someone in the rear parking lot, the board would have to be a certain size in order for them to have a pleasant viewing experience." Now, in order for that pleasant viewing experience to exist, that would require the board to be larger, so they can see it. How would the city would have reacted if they had done that from the very beginning?
Well...
Would be the same place we are now?
Well, not necessarily.
Probably the same place as we are now, because, again, it's 64 square feet bigger or larger than is allowed per code. So it would have been a variance. It's arbitrary in regards to, or in terms of, your site might be better than my site if you're in the back. And what they're putting up may or may not be able to be conveyed, depending on what is being conveyed. I mean, if you're putting up text, that's a lot different than somebody's face up there, or, you know, something like that. Or if they, you know, had sing-alongs or something like that. It depends on what's being presented, or what's being shown. So, yeah, the back of the parking lot for small stuff, yeah, you aren't going to be able to see. But again, it's, it's what's being conveyed and what, and who's looking at it. Too many, too many if sands are butts on that one.
Okay, all right, so just staying with my thought process, someone being able to properly see the board well, would that not constitute a hardship, that they could not see the board, so therefore, they're asking for a larger video board? Would that not be a hardship?
Again, it's... Not under the definition of the code, since the hardship is related to the land.
Yeah.
So it's that there's a condition, legally, when it comes to variances, the hardship is that there's a condition on the land that makes it impossible or impractical to follow the code. Just simple...
Again, we wouldn't have a lot of video boards.
Your lot is a smaller square footage than the other ones, that you can't, you can't satisfy or comply with the code, therefore, you're seeking a variance so that you can still use the same rights of the other property owners, but it's something physical. The hardship is not based on necessarily an external or a third-party, i.e. the, a person with limited eyesight or something like that. It's, the hardship is really tied to the land, and that's what's frustrating your attempts to comply with the code.
And this is just a detail, I suppose, but one of the things on the slide up now is using it Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. and one of the conditions, if it's approved, recommended by staff, is no nighttime use. This time of year, 7:00 to 9:00 is a nighttime use.
Yeah, I was, I was going to address that. If, if, the commission decides to do the variance for the sizing, that's what you're looking at, that we can tack on the conditions for that sizing. Those could be used. The, you know, the timelines, those are great. I don't, I don't mind one day a week in the evening, and, you know, of course, during the wintertime, or summertime, whatever it is that you get to stay out longer, the nine o'clock could be prohibitive, but again, it's still a use, but it's one day a week.
And that would be up to DRC, I suppose, up to here.
Correct. And then, in addition to what Mr. Hules asked for that one, I'd still want to use, utilize the no motion picture films and no renting of the video board, and then, and then the other conditions that the city had put on, other than the one, one day per week in the evenings. And then DRC could approve any other things or special exceptions, or special event permits. Basically, those items in number seven, other than the timeline for the evening.
Okay. All right, other conditions, or, I mean, other questions?
The thing that I keep thinking about is, so many during our COVID creativity moments, there are churches who are broadcasting, like the city does, on a YouTube channel, which you can view from every, any electronic device. You also have Facebook. There are churches here in town that broadcast their services on Facebook. And so, maybe, you know, you're talking about this FM radio, not everybody has a radio in their car anymore, and so they probably have a smart device. And so, why wouldn't you want to have audio and video right there with you in the vehicle, instead of having it up, subject to weather, and the cost must be phenomenal for that screen? In addition, the people that are, the further back you go, the harder it is to see. I mean, sometimes even in a movie theater, it's kind of hard to see if you're halfway back. So as you go further back in that parking lot, your ability to see is going to be greatly compromised. So I just see so many challenges with it.
I appreciate your comments, and I think you bring up some good ones. I mean, but, you know, I can't sit here and Monday morning quarterback, you know, it was what the church's decision was. It, you know, I'm, I could just tell you that they felt it was important, and it was an asset to, or it could enhance the experience, that they felt this is the way to enhance the experience of that drive-in worship, and that's guided them to, you know, kind of where we are today. I mean, you, you, you know, maybe if they had that insight, and you could have shared that with them, a couple, several months ago, that would have been fantastic, but...
Well, and the, and the other thing is, to bring it full to the article from where I started at the beginning of our discussions, was that the sun comes up in the east. So it doesn't have to be up for very long before it's right on that screen. And I don't know any video screen that is a friend to a blazing sun. So the ability to see the screen may be compromised, there could be, I don't know. I'm not in electronics anymore, but I know that there are screens that may mitigate that, and we're coming into summertime. It's going to be hot. Are people really going to sit in their cars? Wouldn't they prefer to, you know? So I, I just, there's just a lot of things.
As you mentioned, that, you know, rises in the, you know, east and sets in the west, so the sun's going to be right behind the video board also, so people are going to be looking almost right into the sun, so...
Okay.
The practicality of it is, between the church and the people who put it up there more than it is us, I think. I still keep coming back to the same thing. If we, if we deny this, and the city council denies it, so they're just going to leave the screen off, so it'll just be a big black board on the side of the building unless they have it removed. As a practical matter, it's going to be a big black board on the side of the building all week long, until three hours on a Sunday, and that's what we're talking about, if they make the concession of that. So I don't see where that's a huge inference of, we're violating this, this code, or we're really that far off, or we're talking about 64 feet, we're talking about three hours a week. So I, I personally don't think that it's, I don't have a problem with it, under those conditions, those specific conditions. It's not going to be, if you can't rent it out, you can't do it, and it's only active three hours a week, so we're talking about, the violation would be for the three hours a week, we've got a sign that's 64 feet too big on the side of the building that's off the main dural. So I don't, I don't see, you know, the whys and wherefores of why it's necessary and how we got to where we're at is one thing, but the question before us is, can we make a variance for this, and is it going to have a long-term effect? And what is the effect if we make the variance? The effect is, for three hours a week, there's going to be a 64-foot, too much sign playing for three hours a week, so I don't have a problem. That's my opinion. One question is, how do we justify the variance? That's the main issue.
Right.
Well, we've already ascertained that it doesn't set a precedent. Well, no variance it does that, no. Okay. We've said that it doesn't make a precedent, and we've also said that the intent of the sign law was for advertising a building or whatever. And my point is that if it's a blank board all week long, and it's only for three hours, what, why is that imposition, or why is that going to be damaging to the city in any way, or the residents, or the character of the land in any way, shape, or form? I just don't see it.
Yeah, I suppose my problem is the ability to make a finding, that the requested variant relates to a hardship due to the characteristics of the land, and not just to the needs of the, of the owner. So that, but that's, I mean, that's, that's just my, that's my concern.
Well, this, this was for COVID. You know, this was designed because people didn't want to go into the building, there might have been restrictions. I think the restrictions are pretty much all off now. But then what's going to happen? To me, the temptation to, oh, what, oh, we have it out there, let's just use it.
Well, actually, real quick, it still would have to, even if you deny it, and say council denies it, they would still, because there is no building permit, they'd be in violation of that, they would have to take it down.
Okay, well, that was, I was using that to make a point. Whether they take it down or not, it's irrelevant. I'm saying it's inactive 99% of the time.
But they did not give...
My point wasn't whether it's up there or not, you know, if they take it down, they take it down. That's not, that's not the point I was making. The point is, is that they're asking to use a sign that's 64 feet bigger than the 200-square foot for three hours a week, and they were willing to make concessions that it won't be used, there will be no sound, it won't be used for any other, no pictures, no movies, no rental. I don't, I don't see where that's causing any major burden to the city or to the surrounding area.
And was permission granted to put it up in the first place?
No. It was not.
Exactly.
Okay, further questions of the applicant? If not, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? In seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion we deny the variance.
A motion by Commissioner Ryan to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have a problem that the staff doesn't recommend the variance. I think I throw a lot of weight.
All right. Now, this is a, the motion is to deny, so the "aye" vote would be to deny. All in favor, say "aye." Aye. Any opposed, say "no."
No.
Okay, then that carries four to one.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do we have any new business? Do we have any old business? There being no further business to consider, we'll be adjourned.